All right, we'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Is there any public discussion? Anything that's not on the agenda? I guess they're all on the agenda, right? Yep, good. Seeing none, I'd ask if there's a motion to approve the agenda in minutes?
And the minutes are from February sixth, seventh, and sixteenth.
Yep, they're in our packet.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the sixth, seventh, and sixteenth of February.
On the agenda?
And then the agenda.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the agenda or minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is claims, conservation claims. Everyone had a chance to review them in their packets.
Got a question about a road vet plan. Is that under ninety-five dollars?
Under which department? Emergency management.
Card services, four ninety-five, oh three, road vet plan. Also, what's the Amazon Weekly Planner?
Is that her department, too? I do not know.
What page is that, Jack? Top right corner?
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
Yeah, page thirty-seven.
Assuming that's one of those that put in a notebook.
Would you?
Write down your.
Would you like us to call her?
She's on the road this morning. I talked to her.
Did you ask her those questions?
No.
Okay, I thought it was something else you talked to her on.
Yeah, I talked to her about the language translation.
Okay, yeah, I had talked to her about that previously.
I'd assume the Weekly Planner is a calendar.
Calendar.
Yeah. As far as the vet bill, I'm not sure. I guess we had that discussion about the dog here during budget, so it's, I would assume it's something for the dog.
It could be something for her.
I don't know what else it'd be for, yeah.
I don't know what else it'd be.
Josh, do you know anything about it?
I do not.
Okay. Would you like to handle these later after we can ask some questions or like later on today or exclude them for this week, this set or?
Is she gonna begin for the language line?
I don't know. Do we have a motion?
We don't.
Okay, I didn't think so.
It would be for the service dogs. I don't think that we could deny the claim anyhow.
That's a different issue.
Yeah. All right, do we have a motion to approve the claims? Or any motion to the effect of the claims?
I'll move to approve the claims.
Okay.
And conservation claim.
A motion, do we have a second? Roger, thanks. Any further discussion on the claims? Do you want roll call vote or? Roll call vote please.
Class?
No.
Jerks?
Uh, yes.
Lecter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes. All right. Motion carries four to one. Monthly update from secondary road form, man.
Morning.
Morning, guys. Could use a little moisture out there.
Yeah, it actually, it was frozen mornings when we got the blade, when I warmed up was worked pretty, worked really good. Things were sitting pretty good here at home.
You're assuming they're gonna wanna put sixteen-foot blades on.
Only too much for a downed road, but it's been three, four weeks yet, for sure. It works a lot nicer when they have them on, but that's a different show.
No.
There's a little hair in blacked out now.
Yeah.
They kinda get in the way when you fly a stone.
Yes, they do.
Just the newer ones, you can get more angle, can't you, Eric?
Well, the blade with the post on it makes it tough.
Oh, that's, yeah, forgot about the post. They're a little longer than they used to be in the frame.
You know, very nice machines.
Any other updates you got for us?
Putting the signs up?
Nonstop, yeah. Hold the signs down. No frost on the grounds, it was not getting many issues.
Well, that's good.
Kinda strange for this time of year not to have frost.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, K R H C, we are
Hello.
up to you guys. Hello.
Good morning, Chloe.
Good morning.
I feel like I have to yell today. I didn't think this would be that much fun.
You can, you can come up.
Kinda see you back there.
Um, so just looking at the first six months of, of, of the year, we do have an operating income so far, um, so, uh, doing well despite our inpatient floor being pre- pre- pretty significant, handling down the first six months. I think our average daily cen- census is at about a six for those first couple of months and, uh, last year it sat at a, about an eight. In the last couple of weeks, I think our inpatient floor has been like seventeen or twenty-two one, one day. I think it was so, uh, really at the max the last couple of weeks and, um, I, I don't think there was really inconsistency in why our inpatient floor was so full. I think they made up that there was some flu, but it's not really anything.
Yeah, actually, so influenza is on the rise right now, so, um, we definitely are seeing more influenza. COVID is really a non-issue, which they're allowed to say, so, and the trends statewide support that as well, so.
You know COVID?
There's, there's some COVID, but it's not significant like it has been in the past, so.
Um, so what's really driving our income this year is our lab and radiology no- nu- numbers, uh, specifically our MRIs and our, uh, C and, 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 and our CDs. And then we, we had started a couple new programs in the last year. Our senior life cell, so, lu- lu- she's outpatient therapy. Um, that, that's been full since it began in, of July. And then our pediatric, uh, occupational and speech ther- 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 therapy row, uh, programs continue to grow, uh, too, so. Um, we have several open p- z- p- z- z-ish and still, uh, I believe still five neuro- 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 neurosaying. Um, hopefully going to, to, to be full soon on our X-ray techs, uh, and then, um, a couple, uh, spots in our clin- clin- clinic as, uh, as well, but other than that, I think we're, we're doing okay. They seem, they, um, seem to be doing, doing well on our third floor despite, uh, the open jobs, so. Any, any questions?
Steph has a couple. Just wanted to let you know that we did, um, honor our physicians last Wednesday on Valentine's Day. It was a very fitting day to honor them. They, actually, Sioux Regional, um, was one of twenty-one hospitals in Iowa to earn a five-star rating for physician communication, um, and then one of three hundred and forty-seven in the nation. And that was based on how clearly our physicians explain things to the patient, how well the physician listens to their patients, and then if the physician has treated the patient with courtesy and respect. So it was, it was a very fitting day for us to honor our physicians and, and the great work that they do for our community.
Congratulations.
Yeah, awesome.
That's all we have.
Did everybody get gratuities or anything? Seems you're doing so well.
They got popcorn. Got their popcorn for our super staff, so that was fun.
Very nice.
Else knew at the hospital?
I don't think so. I, uh, I saw on your agenda you had la- la- language line. You guys must be getting, getting here, because we, we've had that forever and, uh.
Chris has said that you used it out there for years.
Yeah. And it works well, and one thing that we're actually doing now, and it, it costs a little more to do, but, you know, now when you call, the person that picks up the phone, you know, figures out, oh, they're this Chinese, Span- Span- Spanish, but what we're gonna change to is that it's gonna have, have a prompt when you call and have press one for Spanish. What, or, or what ever. So hopefully getting some of those other lan- lan- languages to, you know, not get scared and hang up the phone if, 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 if they feel that they can't get through. So we're excited about doing that, but it does cost a little bit more to.
Do they always figure out what language they're trying to speak in?
Well, I think it's mostly Spanish, right?
Because we got all these other ones that, you know, like in the packing plant down south that were there from other countries and always how would you tell what they're trying to say, you know?
Yeah, so usually there's, there's a card that you can give the, um, the person that has all the different languages on it, and then they can point to which language, and then you can let the language line know that this is the language that you need.
Okay.
Most of the time, um, there are some different Spanish dialects out there, so occasionally, um, they may have a little bit of trouble piecing together exactly which dialect it is, but for the most part, it works really seamlessly, so.
But Venezuela has a different Spanish than Mexico.
Correct.
Interesting.
Well, some of them are kind of a combination of Portuguese and Spanish.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. I got, talked to a guy from South Africa, one's going on in Dutch. But their Dutch is, they call it Swahili Dutch.
Okay.
But it's different, but you can get through most of it.
That's impressive. I didn't realize they spoke Dutch.
Yeah, well, that's South African.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have that on the agenda here a little bit later, so.
That's nice, yeah.
So definitely a need.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you guys for coming in.
Great day. You wanna do one? Service?
Whatever you wanna do, yeah.
That'll be quick and then you can. Lori, are you ready for years of service?
Sure.
Or do you, or do you wanna sit in the comfy chairs for a while?
No, let's. I got work to do, okay? You're not, you're not doing a picture.
Why?
Always take a picture.
You can't get away without a picture.
Everybody gets a picture.
Lori, if you get a fan.
If you don't want a picture, they take it twice, Lori.
Congratulations, thank you, thank you for your service. Here, do you want? You have to hold it back.
Oh, I held it back. Well, let's do it again, oh, gosh.
Okay.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lori.
We'll send it to Tom.
Yeah.
We'll put it, we'll put it on the front page of the paper. All right. Damn.
Should have had to do a speech.
Well, next time you remember to ask. All right.
I forgot to work, how many years was it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Dan, you're up for VA update.
All right. Well, I sent, uh, an email to y'all yesterday. I got that done. So my metrics for the month of January, I was looking at thirty-one calls, a hundred messages, uh, sixty-five walk-ins. We did thirty-four scheduled appointments and one appointment out of office. We were able to get nine hearing aids sets repaired for veterans that month. I'm tracking twelve hundred and five records in my system. About a third of those are deceased veterans and spouses. I'm just maintaining the record. Uh, got currently forty-four claims in the system with VA. Six that were ready for decision as of Friday. I've got thirteen that I'm currently developing and one that's in supplemental claim and appeals lane. Um, currently registered for the national training. Uh, oddly enough, it's in Denver in May. Um, normally that, you know, the nationals was in June, right after, shortly after Memorial Day, so now it's shortly before Memorial Day, so not sure what caused that, but, uh, I'm laid on for that. Our spring conference in April, uh, down in Des Moines is coming up. I'm also reserved for that. Uh, continuing to work my department policies and procedures SOP to kind of align with the current changes of my office and, uh, gonna try and push that draft to my commissioners in March. Currently with the awards just for the month of January, we're looking at about six thousand dollars with retroactive benefits, a little over fifteen thousand. Uh, the spouses with the DIC is a little over twenty-seven. Retro is a hundred and eighty-one thousand. Spouse survivor benefits, uh, ninety-seven hundred, retro twenty-two thousand seven. Uh, veterans compensation so far, uh, for this year, four ninety-six, uh, nine oh three, and retro is one point seven million. Um, the pensions currently sitting at about twenty thousand, retro about eighty-seven thousand, and service-connected burials was twenty-four thousand, and non-service-connected burials was a thousand ninety-six. Uh, I have eleven veterans that I'm tracking that are individually unemployable due to the nature of their service-connected injuries. And I have forty-three veterans that I'm tracking that are permanent and total one hundred percent. Did meet and do some training quarterly with the regional office here last week. And, uh, some of the things that they shared with us was that VA has hired additional personnel for outreach activities. Um, so they're putting some folks from the regional offices in some of the clinics and doing some, uh, some contact with the veterans as they come in and trying to get ahead of the claims process. For fiscal year twenty twenty-three, VA has awarded a hundred and sixty-three billion dollars in compensation and pension. Uh, the claims increased nationwide by sixty-two percent, uh, over twenty twenty-two, uh, with an all-time record of two to four million claims approved, so it's kind of the highest it's ever been. But we have a significant backlog because the people that didn't wanna come back to work after COVID got released and they were removed. So they were able to hire back fifty percent of what they had, so now they're training those folks. The downside to some of that is, uh, it, it, as it would apply to me, is I gotta take a more critical look at the awards that are received and making sure that they're correct, that the math is correct, that they didn't overlook or miss a, uh, secondary condition or a special monthly compensation entitlement. So it takes a little more time to go through some of that paperwork. Uh, VA is working to centralize their workload management, and they're working to identify additional resources. The regional office has stood up a SharePoint website. So now, uh, as I understand it, if we have, uh, a need for assistance with a claim, we don't pick up the phone and directly call the regional office to try and get ahold of the, the service organization. We actually have to put in a VSO claim request for assistance. So been working on that. They're usually very responsive. Pension management, on the other hand, not so much. Twenty twenty-four so far, uh, there's been a seventy-five point three percent claim approval rate for those that have been submitted and, uh, four point seven billion dollars awarded since February. Uh, but again, with the backlog of claims greater than a hundred and twenty-five days, it takes some time to get some processing done. Um, didn't have any handouts this month for you guys, unfortunately, so we'll see what we get for next month. But subject to your questions, that's really all I have for my update. You know, that was a lot of stuff.
Is that seventy-five point three percent claim approval rate higher than it typically is or lower? Or do you have any history off the top of your head?
The accuracy of veteran service representatives or the ones who do the ratings and stuff, if I understood, uh, the VA metrics, are, are at, are expected to be higher than ninety-two percent. The approval rate was significantly less than that seventy-five percent that I showed them. So one of the things that they're doing when they're hiring these new folks and they pair them up with a coach and they're training them on some of this stuff is to really pay attention to the details to number one, improve the accuracy of the rating of the claims, and then number two, claim approval process overall, so. Yes, it is higher than what it had been previous, so.
That's good.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, if not, thank you.
You're welcome. Just to let you know, we got a wing feed Saturday over at Delmore Legion. If you're interested, I'm, I'm gonna be helping with that on Friday, so.
That's good.
My office will be closed, but Saturday's the main wing feed, if you got nothing to come on.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, thanks, Dan. All right. Healthy Harvest of North Iowa, feel free to come on up.
I'm gonna come closer. You might not be able to see each other. Okay, we can come around, which is like.
There you go.
Now we're in the big chairs. What are the big chairs, Andrea?
Yeah, so hi, I'm Andrea Ewell Sizer with Healthy Harvest of North Iowa, and you guys know Joanne?
If you, if you don't know me, I'm Joanne Miki Bodie, representing all kinds of things, but here is a member of Healthy Harvest and a local producer.
And on our board.
Yes.
So, um, Healthy Harvest of North Iowa, if you don't know who we are, um, we are a nonprofit that connects and educates in support of the local food system, um, which means we do a lot of different things, um, related to supporting local food producers and connecting them with market opportunities and connecting, um, consumers or eaters with ways to connect with local food. So we work in a nine-county area in north central Iowa, because Sioux County is on our western edge, but we go all the way over to Mitchell County, which includes Osage, and then down to Charles City, um, Franklin County, and, uh, Wright County, so it's a kind of a, not quite a square, but, um, nine counties up here in north central. So, um, I provided you with a bit of a summary of what we've been doing lately. Um, we, a lo- a big priority is farm-to-school. Um, farm-to-school is connecting local producers with opportunities to, um, sell to the schools so that the students get nutritious, um, locally raised foods. Um, there has been a large grant that came into Iowa to support farm-to-school, actually, over a number of years since COVID started, there's been grant money coming from federal, um, sources that have come into Iowa, and then locally, it's been administered by, um, different entities in Iowa. Um, this one has, is being administered through the Iowa Department of Ag and Land Stewardship and the Iowa Valley RCND, which is Resource Conservation and Development. But the way it works is that they, um, the money comes in through those sources, and then they need to have local, kind of on-the-ground folks to help get that out to the schools and to connect the schools with opportunities to purchase local. Um, so having a local food entity like ourselves in your region is a very big perk because it helps, um, us to be able to look, work one-on-one with the schools. Um, we are trained in procurement of local food for, with food service directors, and so we are able to understand, um, you know, some of the, it's very complex, as you probably know, with a food service, and applying from, you know, somebody other than their regular distributor is a step that they have to take in addition to all the other things they have to do. So having somebody that can kind of coach them through that process is a very big asset. Um, you can see the Elbona Schools received sixteen thousand of that, um, funding. Um, and it is, the schools do have to opt-in, so not every school opts in. I think it has a lot to do with the capacity of the school food service director and, um, just kind of the interest or knowledge about sourcing local. So, um, we've been helping different schools throughout our region. Um, I listed off some of the items that your, um, Elbona School has received, um, from local farms in the region, um, and throughout the state of Iowa. The, the food does need to be purchased from producers in Iowa, so, or the, I guess, the one county touching Iowa, um, around in the other states, so. Um, we also, as I handed out to you, the Local Food Guide, this is sort of our, or this is our consumer-facing publication that we use to help, uh, produ- or people find local food and, and discover where they might be able to, um, support the local producers. Uh, you have Joanne as one of your producers in this, um, county, but five other, or five producers in the county that are listed in our Local Food Guide, and of course, your farmer's market in, in Sioux County. Uh, so that is a nice perk to be able to connect, um, people with, uh, and identify those farms. Uh, another one, oh, yes.
I'd like to say, I use this resource a lot at Farmer's Market. If people come up and say, do you have, you know, pasture-raised chickens or whatever? And if, if we don't, I say no, and if there's nobody at our local market that has it, I can give them one of these and they can still find that food, source it regionally. It's really nice to have a resource that has people's phone number and email and all this stuff gathered up so nicely that I can just hand it off. Otherwise, I end up tracking those things down myself and getting back to them. So I really like having this guide because it's, it's very, very handy to connect people with things they're looking for.
Yeah, and it is voluntary again for people to sign up, but anyone, any producer that is looking for kind of a, a marketing resource, um, you know, are eligible to sign up, the fee is very low to just kind of cover our printing costs, but, and then they also get listed on our website, and then, um, we do, you know, feature the farm, every farmer that's in our guide gets, um, featured throughout the year on the Farm Fresh Fridays and things like that on the social media. So it is, um, quite a, uh, for smaller producers, it's really ni- nice for them to have a, a way to market them themselves, um, and, uh, very organized, so. Um, yes, so farmer's markets, we have farmer's markets, we also, uh, have, uh, farmer's market demonstrations. So we, um, some of our staff or some of our interns will come to the farmer's markets and do onsite cooking demonstrations and taste test samples using foods directly from the market. Usually, uh, they go to the market that morning and actually purchase, um, ingredients and then cook them up or serve them up right in, you know, right there on the, on the spot. So that's a really nice resource for people to understand, you know, some of new ideas of how to use the things that are in season, um, and then be able to go, if they like the recipe, go and directly purchase directly from that farm. Uh, we do provide recipe cards for people to take home and, which includes our website because we have, um, hundreds of recipes on our website that, uh, go along with the North Iowa season so that people can shop locally at the farmer's market or directly from a farmer and then, um, or, you know, create those recipes at home. Um, let's see, other things.
That was really nice, I think it was Haley that came to our farmer's market last, she came twice last season. And it's, what's fun about that is I've always done a lot of recipes from our farmer's market booth because getting people to try the food, what do I do with this, you know? Um, as our tables got busier, I don't have time to do that for our customers anymore because we will have twenty people waiting for us when we show up at the market, and we just can't do, we can't do all of it. It's really great to bring in someone else who, that's their whole focus, talking with people about recipes and expanding their knowledge of what to do with local.
and expanding their knowledge of what to do with local foods. So it's been, it's been a great help and it's just kind of fun to see what they do with it. Having more people and different resources at the market is always a good thing from my perspective. Yeah, and we really prioritize, last year specifically, we really prioritize making sure we tried to get to get to all the markets in our region at least once, but the bigger markets, like, kind of on a monthly or sort of monthly basis and as we have more resources and time, we can also expand that, so. Grow, Eat, Play campaign, I mentioned that a little bit, that's partly included in our brochure, but that's our forward, you know, customer-facing way of encouraging people to, you know, grow food, eat local and play. Play kind of deals with going to the farms, like going and experiencing things like pumpkin patch.
For example.
Or apple orchards or things like that where you can get on the farm and really learn what's going on. So statewide, I think I kind of alluded a little bit to this, we are connected to a lot of statewide networks related to local food. So we're working with the Food Hub Managers Working Group, the Regional Food Systems Working Group and the Local Food Coalition. And that really connects this part of the state to the statewide conversations and being able to access the grant funding. In addition to the LFS or the Local Food for Schools grant that I mentioned earlier, there's also another grant which is related to sourcing local food for food insecurity and food access. In certain parts of the state and North Iowa, we've been able to also help procure food, local food from farmers at a fair price and those foods are going to food pantries and summer feeding programs and things like that. So it's really a great, these have been really great federal programs and I think having a local entity in your region that's been able to connect those dots and bring it to North Iowa is a real big asset. So we are going, or I have been going, I'm new to the Healthy Harvest Director position. I've been with Healthy Harvest off and on as a contractor for about ten years, but this is like my fourth month, I guess, as the Director. And so as we were talking with the board, we, we haven't been to your county in a number of years. I think we have come in the past and asked for a request, or requested some funding from the supervisors and we request funding from all nine counties. And I know you guys may be in a, I don't know where you're at with your budget planning for the year, but we decided as, our board wanted me to at least come and reintroduce us to you so you'd be aware of what we do and what we're up to these days. And then we've been doing, like I said, requests across all of our counties. So I did include at the bottom on the second page, a funding request of two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is fifteen percent per capita. We've been asking all the supervisors between fifteen to thirty percent depending on the county and the past funding request.
Cents, cents.
Cents, yes.
You said, you said percent.
Oh yes, cents per capita, yes, sorry. Correct, it's printed, right?
Yeah, it's, it's printed, right.
Yes, so, yes, and it varies across the counties, which counties have funded and at what level, but we thought we'd start there with kind of giving you an idea of what, what we do. Those are the types of things that we do for the county that kind of supports the local food initiative and that is the funding request for this.
How many people are at Farmer's Market?
We usually get between twelve and fifteen vendors throughout the season. Not all of those vendors are there the entire season. Some are, only come for certain parts of the season, but yes. And I would say there's others who we're trying to cultivate to start coming to Farmer's Market. We welcomed six new vendors last year, which was a fantastic thing. What we're really seeing Roger is a lot of our vendors that have been cornerstones of the market are aging out and some of them have died, like two died last year and that's hard for us. And so how do we grow these new vendors? They take a little more time, they take a little more resources, especially our produce vendors. One of the things that Healthy Harvest provides is a lot of training for new growers. We took advantage of that training, you know, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago when we first got started. It was very, very helpful, so that's one of the things that I really appreciated about Healthy Harvest. So yes, they support the people we have, but also the people we're trying to cultivate into growers.
Yeah, I think you also mentioned the economic impact of the market is important.
As you know, I wear a few hats around here and when I put on my economic development hat, I was just at a meeting where Travel Iowa was talking, the Iowa Economic Development Authority. One of the things, here's the three things they said people expect when they come to Iowa for a visit. They expect farmer's markets, they expect farm-to-table dinners and this is sixty-three percent of people coming here expect these things and they expect outdoor adventures. And I feel like we are doing our best to provide those things. We can do some of it, but it's nice to have help from someone else doing the rest and Healthy Harvest is helping us do some of the rest. There's talk of a farm-to-table dinner this year with Plum Creek Winery and I are in conversation about that. These are things that people want to see and what make them feel like living here is fun. It's what draws new people to come and experience here, which I believe in all of that, whatever hat I'm wearing, I believe that through and through. And it all is kind of connected, the, the local farmer, the economic development, the quality of life are all intertwined. But I hope that kind of answers that question a little bit. But what other questions do you have?
Do you find that more people participate in the farmer's market in the eastern part of the district than here? Or do you know, like Osage and St. Anzger?
Osage and St. Anzger both have farmer's markets, but they're pretty small as well. The two biggest markets in the region are Clear Lake is by far the largest and then Mason City Market. But we are, we do have a priority to work with all of the markets in the region, especially some of the, you know, the Elgona or Osage, Charles City, Franklin County, trying to get, help those markets build up and to learn from the successes of the, like the Clear Lake Market. I was on the board of the Clear Lake Market for eight years before this. So I do have a pretty good understanding of how those markets work and, you know, some of the things that have worked, some that didn't. So I provide a lot of technical support to market leaders to help them to build the market.
And truth be told, it's kind of like when you look at how many small schools and how many small communities are in Iowa. When we think of farmer's markets, we think of, oh, Des Moines Market, oh, the Cedar Rapids Market. But most of them are our size, you know, they're smaller, they have that handful of dedicated vendors. And so there's a lot of support out there for these, keeping these smaller markets going because they make a big difference for access to local food.
Yeah, it's easier for people to go right when it's new community. You know, some people might, Clear Lake does see a lot of tourism because it is, you know, Clear Lake, I guess. But not, people don't want to drive to get their groceries in Clear Lake, you know? They want to shop locally in their town, so if there's a market here, they're gonna shop there.
So do you all have the markets on the same day or do you stagger them?
It varies across the, if closer, when you have communities closer together, they try to stagger them. But it kind of depends, like Clear Lake and Mason City are now on the same hold on Saturday and you guys are on Saturday.
We have a Saturday nine to eleven that goes from the first Saturday of June to the second Saturday of October. But then we also do a Wednesday market and that's where we sometimes will pick up a few different vendors that are between other markets. And that's just gonna be July through Sep-, the first week of September. Basically, July fourth to Labor Day is when that one is, Wednesday's three to five. So we do have opportunities for vendors to jump in.
Some of the vendors are actually not from around this area, aren't they?
That's true, yes.
So some vendors actually come here to sell in Elgona and, you know, so it kind of helps bring in other.
Mr. Peaches is a great example. We have a guy who gets, I call him Mr. Peaches, his real name is Darwin Lucky. But he comes here from Garner and brings fresh peaches and he's one of our kind of extra seasonal guys. He only has, can get fresh peaches, he's not growing those, he's bringing them up from Georgia or somewhere. But people flock to the market when Mr. Peaches is there. And while they're there, they buy extracts and breads and fresh produce and all those other things because who doesn't love fresh peach? I enjoy many. So, but yeah, you're absolutely right, we had a nut, I call him David the Nut Guy because I can't remember his last name because he brings roasted almonds, almonds. He comes from Fort Dodge to participate sometimes on Wednesdays, so the market's a draw even for vendors.
Who is, just out of curiosity, who is Hazel Acres?
That's Jeff Jensen.
Okay.
Is it Fenton?
Fenton.
Yeah, he is a very dedicated hazelnut grower. We just saw him last Friday, I should have brought samples for you guys. He's been growing hazelnuts and marketing and roasting and selling those for, I want to say maybe fifteen years or more. Yeah, and if you've never met Jeff, he's a fun guy, yeah.
He works for Trees Forever as his regular job.
He was, remember when Elgona went through the Elgona, the Community Visioning Project a couple of years ago? He was our leader for that, our facilitator through his hat as a Trees Forever person, so. He's got, yeah, he also kind of has his fingers in a lot of different ag-related, community-related projects. These are great questions, who else has questions for him?
You might, you might add a vendor from La Verne at some point, whether you know.
Another vendor I'd look.
We're working towards it.
That, that's awesome, that's great to hear Carter. One thing I would love to see us add is our Top Dog Brewery, because local breweries that kind of fits in with those foodie, people that like to have a local meal also like to have a local beer sometimes. And so our new brewery here in Elgona, I think would benefit from being listed on this, on this food guide.
Yeah, it works with the play, Grow, Eat, Play.
Yes.
They have a new one in Titanca.
Oh, we should get them on the list, yeah, they, they actually.
He closed his repair shop and started a brewery.
I know, Titanca is becoming Sioux County's hottest suburb, they've got all kinds of things over there, yeah.
Well, yeah, S and B and Bancroft.
Right, yes, all of those should be, be in there because they are very unique and people are looking for those things and, and yes, we were kind of just talking last Friday, like, who else could we get?
You won't get it on one piece of paper anymore.
Yeah, well, that used to, yeah, we can change the format if we needed to, right Kyle? So yes, we'd like to see a Sioux County representative of all the cool things you can do and see him eat and drink while you're here.
No, that's good and, I mean, I, I know timeline-wise, we've, we had our last planned budget workshop on Friday, but I just asked Tammy if it'd be possible to still incorporate in this year's budget and she said yes, so I'd be, I'd be supportive of incorporating it. What's thoughts from everyone else?
Yeah.
I think more and more as we go forward, it's going to become more and more important and people are, the trend is going more towards revitalizing what you're talking about and with our younger generation.
It's much more.
I think it kind of died out a little bit with our parents and, and it's coming back in a different way.
Yeah, I was.
I can see that.
I was in a meeting yesterday and they, you know, the local food movement, you know, it's, for a while you kind of feel like it's a bit of a fad, but now it's, there's a solid trend that, that people are looking for local food and there's statewide work, a lot of statewide work going on right now, related, even related to the legislature and asking for funding to support these federal programs as they expire, asking the state to support those programs going forward. And I don't know where the progress is exactly with that for this year, but I think the discussion is out there and there's a lot of like momentum right now for this kind of work.
Mike Nate does a great job talking about local foods. He came and visited our farm during COVID, I think it was during twenty twenty and he showed up and did a tour of our pumpkin patch and he knows this area very well, of course, since we're up down the road. But more than some folks, I think he really speaks up to the local food issue and how important it is. So I do think that's part of the momentum that's dragging it.
He was in Hampton last week at the culinary school at the Hampton High School. So, and they do a farm-to-fork dinner every year and so, yeah, he's, he's well aware of, you know, the local food scene.
Yeah.
Well, as bad as school lunches are, I'm sure any kid is supportive.
Yes, whatever we can do to help those school lunches. Now, I know the lunch ladies have their hands tied on a lot of things and they really do their best, but I think.
I didn't mean their cooking.
Yes, of course, of course, I mean.
I hear they're gonna get an email or.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get all the hate mail though.
You're probably gonna get chewed out on that one.
No more Krispies for you, Carter. But we, we recognize that's why some of these grants are in place to help bring some of those foods in because it is a challenge to make institutional food that you could feed to a few hundred kids that they're gonna eat and they're gonna like and it's good for you and all that. I mean, it is a, it's like a puzzle, you have to solve every day and they, and they do it. But how can we help, you know, make it better and I do think we're trying to do that.
Yeah, and sometimes getting it on the lunch line or like the, into food service is difficult, but we do a lot of taste testing where kids can taste new things that are grown in Iowa in the right season when it's fresh and delicious, you know, and not shipped all the way from California. So, you know, just getting them to try new things is part of what we do too. We do have a person on our staff that does, you know, work farm to school as half, half of her job is to do those types of things and connect directly with the schools. So sometimes it's in the lunchroom, sometimes it's in the classroom depending on the school and where they are in their kind of local food journey, so.
The best news I found out last week is there's a bunch of food costumes that could be brought out if we need to raise enthusiasm. I was excited to hear this, I can't wait to use that something. You might see them in the next Band-Aid break.
They get cleaned out of the back positive gear.
Healthy Harvest has these and I wasn't aware of it until last week. I only have a banana costume, I wish I had others, but I thought I had one. But thank you for your consideration, gentlemen. And any other final questions for us? We know you have other stuff you want to get through today.
This is a slant day.
Oh, good, that's how we got worked in, thank you for working it out. Towards the end of budget season, we really appreciate it. And if you do have follow-up questions, I would encourage you to reach out to either Andrea or me. We're doing our best to answer them, but as you can tell, this is a passion area for us and something we think about every day, even though it's winter time. Still, you're still working through my winter squash.
Well, thanks for all you do and coming in, so.
So usually how we do this is when you're ready to collect the funds, we ask that you submit a letter to the auditor's office and then we will go ahead, after July first, of course, then we will go ahead and send you the check. So just whenever you're ready, send us a letter and we'll get.
Okay, so send a letter for that amount that's mentioned and then, I can do that anytime, but you.
After July first.
Always send it out.
Yeah, after July first when the new budget is.
You gotta wait for the new budget.
Yeah.
You guys got any thoughts for adding it or supportive?
We'll let you three decide.
We already voiced it.
Go out of here, we're done. We're gonna ride off into the sunset and never look back.
Well, there you have it.
And there it is, yeah. Get the horses saddled up, that's what I'm understanding, okay. Well, then we appreciate you staying neutral on it, I guess that's. Okay, well, if anything, anything else that I will leave you to?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great day.
Yep.
We'll end that. Alright, Language Line Solutions. Roger, you said you already talked to Chris on this, get you, all your questions answered?
Yeah, it, it'll only be for the people that want to use it and then it'll come out of their budget, not whoever uses it, it's gonna come out of their budget.
That department?
That department.
Does anyone for the departments have a line for this yet?
No.
Think so.
So they're gonna, you're gonna have to adapt that into the budget somehow.
Well. You have any thoughts on how we.
It would have to be by department, so whatever department is wanting to use it, they'll just have to let me know right away and so we can get that added. This is stuff I wish we had earlier, but, because this is.
Can we just put like a, a dollar in for each line item and then see what they actually use?
I mean, you could do that, I don't know how we come up with that amount, but yeah.
I don't have any idea what.
At least you'd separate tracking wise and then see what actual usage is after six months or a year. I mean, besides.
What departments are interested?
I would, I think treasurer and recorder have both talked about it.
Recorder, treasurer, even.
I don't know about assessor.
I don't either, driver's license, I would think the assessor.
I'd say driver's license for sure, because they have.
I mean, treasurer's, treasurer's office.
Even the assessor's office, they get people standing there that can't talk English trying.
Or attorney.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to let me know like today because we're not here tomorrow.
Oh, I mean.
Chris has said she'd like to use it, sheriff.
She doesn't have it in her budget either, does she?
Nobody does.
Nobody did, so the sheriff, Chris, recorder, assessor, treasurer.
You're going too fast.
I would think that the.
Chris, treasurer, recorder.
We would need to separate it out treasurer and driver's license.
I would guess EMS.
No, it's the same department.
I would guess EMS too, probably.
We could just basically budget double what we do for the other departments in that way.
Well, not walking in, but depending on who.
Serving.
Yeah, custom people.
Does it work on yourself?
Yeah, well, I don't, you have to have the.
I think what it is is you, I think you call in.
The line or whatever, but.
You call in and you just do it on speakerphone essentially.
So I think so. I'm not well versed on all that. There's stuff in here about equipment and I didn't know if we were doing any of that or not, but.
Okay, so I have sheriff, Carissa, treasurer, recorder, EMS, attorney. Is that it?
Did you catch the, what me and Roger were saying? For the treasurer's office, we would, uh, put double the amount because that would cover both the treasurer's office and the driver's license station.
You can ask.
And there's the treasurer name.
What's, what's the amount?
Yeah, we don't know.
Well, I was thinking five hundred. Does Nick have an opinion on that?
What's that?
All right. Are you, we're talking about the language line thing right now.
Okay.
Is that what you were coming over for?
Yeah, I was just gonna see where you guys were.
That's where we are.
That's, that's where we are.
Perfect timing.
Okay, what, um, I'm not familiar with it at all. What is it?
I thought Chris, it's, you call in and, and they give you the language that they're talking. You're gonna get a card that you can put out at your desk and they'll point to the language that they're talking.
It's a translation service.
Oh, yeah, that'd be nice.
And then you'll, you'll be able to call in and have somebody translate what they're saying to you.
We get a lot. We, we have a lot of, uh, um, language barrier.
Right.
Customers.
Right.
You know, driver's license, probably more so than motor vehicle tax side, not too bad. But motor vehicle and driver's licenses has, that's, they deal with that a lot.
So we were just discussing that you would need two different ones, probably one for downstairs, one for upstairs.
Well, the cards are, are.
Yeah.
No, like budget, budget wise, they would be.
I mean, I don't know how it works, how you pay for it. Is it just one subscription? Is it per line? How is it?
Well, if you just use your cell phone, I was, I was reading through your, I thought it was sixty-four cents per minute.
Yep.
Sixty-nine cents for.
So there's phone interpreting equipment, lease fees, um, monthly lease fee per unit applies.
But if, if we have one account for Cassuth County and we all call in like our conference line, it's all one bill. So then we, I, probably better just put it under the board.
If it's just one line, if you just, I mean, I don't know how it works. If it works per line, then you'd have to do it by department. But if it's just by account and you have one account, then it would just be one. So I guess.
That's a good question.
We'd have to know for sure.
Well, do you wanna call Chris and ask her if she had, she knows?
You can call her on her cell phone. She said she'd be driving. Why don't you give her a call now? Cause I don't, Nick, how many times would you use it? I, you know, this is.
Daily.
Yeah.
Daily.
I mean, every Tuesday when I walk in here, there's people downstairs.
It's every day. It's every day.
It's every day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to call her right now, guys.
Yeah, especially driver's license.
Yeah.
I bet she's seventy-five percent of there.
Hey, uh, I got you on speakerphone here in the boardroom talking about this language line stuff. Uh, one question we just kind of had in discussion here, would this be one account and like one bill for Cassuth County? Or would it be by department separated out?
It'll be, yeah, it would be by department. So each department will have their own ID code that they would use when they call into language line and they get billed by that.
Do we need to do it that way or is that what they recommended or?
That's how it's due. That's how it's set up. So, cause, and that's what they recommend. So like the hospital I work there, they had one account, but each department had their own code and then the department put that in there, you know, then they're budgeting out on that in their, in their department.
Okay, so, so they still had one bill that came to the hospital though?
No.
Yes. Yes, the ID code had their own, so each department had their own code.
Okay, well, we're thinking in, well, yes, but we're trying to correlate that in budget sense of how we do that. So if it comes in one bill, then we'll need to have it paid out of one line. So.
You can do it. You can do it.
Yeah, or we can, or I can ask them to just do the county contract and each department has their code in and they get the bill. I mean, I'm sure they'll work with us doing that.
Yeah, that would probably work better.
It would be coded into every different department.
You could do it either way.
But I could find that out before you, you know.
It's probably easier to just have one bill.
I, it, it'll, I think it'd be easier to have one bill. We can see which departments use it and whatever, but at the end of the day, it's the same.
Oh, yeah, you'll get the code.
It's the same people paying the bill, so let's not double our work.
Basically, the way, the way she's describing it, I think is it, it would come in as one bill, but eat, there'd be a line item for each separate code.
No, you wouldn't have, that would be double the work. You wouldn't have a line item. If you just had a code, you wouldn't need a line.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The code is like the line item.
It would be broken down.
Yep, yep, broken down.
When you go to the parts store, you get X, Y, Z different parts.
But not our line item.
Our line items for our budget would.
No, sorry, that was the wrong, wrong use.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay.
Yeah. Terminology can be important with conversations like this. Um, okay. I mean.
Yeah, so they just, they just say it, establish a county, county account and then each department, whoever wants to have this gets a code. So they know which department. So I mean, you could have that code and just bill out. They could just bill you at Cassuth County and then however you guys want to do it that way to each department. I mean, whatever is simpler.
Well, I mean, like certain things we could potentially bill across to the departments, but all the ones that get paid out of the same place, we might as well eliminate the extra work. Um, but that could depend, after we, after we had some actuals, we could see where that actually makes sense to break down. It's all about sign.
Yeah, I, I know EMS is wanting that. I'm not for sure. I know a couple other, I don't know if the treasurer was wanting that, but this depends on how many people you have too. So it might be pretty simple.
So, but I think it's, I know.
Would EMS have to be built too?
And the equipment is.
We would build that back out.
You'd have to build that back up.
To, to, because of the levy. Yeah. So there, like, there would be a couple departments we would probably separate out to. Yep, we would, there'd be a couple things we would separate out, but like the majority of the courthouse and stuff could all be tied together.
For now, I can.
For now, at least.
Just, so they could just have their own code and then EMS could have their own code, but they would be billed out separately from the levy. And then the courthouse people would just have one code and that'd just be out for the courthouse. That'd be perfect.
Okay.
And so, did you understand the equipment? So they can lease their purchase, whatever they, whatever you choose to do, so.
Yeah, I mean, we barely just touched on that. Is that, um, uh, is that equipment required? Or is this something you call in from like our cell phones or what do we do here? Or you have to have this equipment to use it?
You have to have the equipment to use it.
Okay, so.
So like the, the phone is either a dual headset or just one phone. So it's just one handheld or whatever. Um, or it's two. So you could be on one end and they could be on the other. It just depends on what you want. Uh, I know EMS is gonna do the video, the video one.
Okay.
Cause they'll have that on their, I, their pads.
So like for EMS then, are we talking multiple, multiple pieces of equipment for the different rigs or like?
Nah, I don't know. It's still sticky. But I just know that he had talked about putting it, it might just be on their cell phones, the rig's cell phone.
So, so do you have to have this extra stuff then or not though?
Um, some of that is optional. So like the language line video, that, that equipment first purchase is optimal. Um, you can put that on your Android app. So those can go on their phones. The phones, the telephones itself, those have to be leased or purchased.
Okay.
So I'm assuming not everybody.
And that's in that, it should be on page. I think it talks about that on page. Uh, where it talks about one point three phone integrating equipment.
Yeah, that's, yep.
So that talks about your options there and then it goes over to the video part.
So with, like, have you talked to anyone else about this besides Phil?
I, we brought it up at department head and like I said, there was a few that were interested. I was wanting to make sure that you guys are on board and would be approval of that and then having another discussion at the department head and see who all wanted, what they wanted. And then I was gonna have Michelle from Language Line come on board and talk through my, call her and just select if they had any other questions in addition to what's presented.
Well, do it, do we have any idea what we're looking at cost wise? Cause I mean, the cost per minute is one thing for what's actually used, but then you start stacking up a bunch of equipment and all the different.
So the, it's per minute is sixty-four cents per minute. That's the only get charged when you use it.
Yep.
The only time. And then the, uh, phone, depending on what you want, and so if it's just one, a one hand handset, that's, uh, the lease fee is four dollars and fifty cents. And then the dual handset is twelve fifty per month. Cordless is ten fifty per month. So it's almost better off just to purchase the one year replacement.
Yeah, according to the new gas bill.
So if you did the dual, it's a hundred fifty.
I mean, you can, but you have to report it. So depending on how much it's gonna be.
Well, it, I mean, budget wise, it'd be good to have an idea of what we're looking at spending.
We could bring, yep, we could bring that up at department head and see who's all in our circle.
We need to know today, the budgets.
Yeah, our, our last budget workshop was Friday and, I mean, today's really the last day for final, final numbers to be put in of small tweaks.
Okay.
Um.
So. So if EMS wants this, can you sign the contract in EMS? Um, go ahead and go for that since they're on their levy or?
It's not in their budget right now.
I mean, no, no one has it incorporated in their budget and that's what we're talking about of where we could potentially add it or whatever. But it doesn't, I mean, Nick said he's hadn't heard about it until today.
I, I think I recall a little bit of the department head meeting, but.
Little bit in the department head meeting.
We didn't get way into it.
Okay.
It, does, is there somebody from the company that could give us a little information more than what we've got here?
That.
We could, I mean, it doesn't have to be agreed out today. We can discuss it more, whatever you guys choose to do. But I just wanted to bring it up because there's, I mean, Phil would like to use it. There's times that I would like to use it. There's times that, I don't, law enforcement may need to use it.
Do we wanna do it now or are you gonna wait until July?
You're gonna have to do a budget amendment then.
Then we'll have to do a budget amendment. That's, that's where I'm coming.
Are you, are you wanting to use it now or in July with new budget?
Um, I, I could wait till July. I don't know. I'm sure Philip could wait till July. They've been doing what they've been doing, but it's just a nice tool to have. So if we can wait till July, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Whatever's gonna make it easier for you guys. How's that?
I mean, your functioning is just a matter of it would make it easier.
Easier.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, can we wait till July?
Yeah, yeah, there's something I wanna look at. Yeah.
The big question is what do we put in the budget for dollar right now today?
We should get a little more information before we can decide that.
Well, we don't, uh, we don't have time.
We don't have any time. I'm just, yeah, I'm.
Is it, it'd be nice.
I'm, I'm, did, let you know what costs the hospital?
Do you have any idea what the hospital spends a year on it?
No, but I can find that out.
Find that out.
Can you find that out fast and get back to us?
Yeah, yeah. I'll call up there here and see if I can get ahold of them and I'll call you back.
Even get back today?
Yeah, like if you can find that out right away and get back to us, that would be great. Cause we'll, we'll see what we can plug in then. So, okay, perfect. Thanks.
Is that good with you, Tammy? Cause I need you to do something, but.
Yeah, I vaguely remember in the department head meetings and she said that, yeah, but, uh.
I'm, I'm just shooting the dart and say two thousand dollars now, but that probably won't do it.
Maybe.
No, not if it's sixty-nine cents a minute. Sometimes those people are nixed up as a half hour.
Yeah.
Well, but it, it should be faster and easier hypothetically if you have, if you have that translation.
But they use phones and stuff to talk between now. I mean, yeah, it'd be easier, but.
But then they're using their own personal phones, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, when I was on vacation, I used my phone to translate stuff, but it takes five times the amount of time to have the same conversation cause you're struggling through that translation. So if, if the translation is seamless or smooth, so to speak, it would be more like us talking right now, hopefully. Um, I'm, never used this before. I'm just trying to reach outside the box and guess.
Is that a set in stone, right? I mean, it seems like a lot for a minute, but I didn't know. Is, do they have, is, that's just their set in stone? Do they have governmental rates? When do they get? I mean, I don't know.
Or if you have more than multiple lines and whatever, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. Just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I think it'd be important, more important for you than anybody else, putting it down.
Well, I, law enforcement and EMS, that's pretty important too. But, well, yeah, we, we have foreign nationals every day.
Yeah.
And they don't speak a lot of English.
Mostly Spanish?
Yeah.
I think law enforcement and EMS would maybe be a little more time critical for that.
Yeah.
But the volume and stuff that you'd be dealing with, I could, I could, I mean, they're all important.
Yeah, we just downstairs took some papers down stairs and there was, there, they were coming in already.
Yeah.
Well, Chris, it might give us some idea, but you know, I mean, you got me thinking, you might just have to put like ten, fifteen thousand in budget. If that wasn't enough, you'd have to do an amendment.
You talking per department or overall?
Overall.
Just one.
Just one.
And if EMS and EMA use it, you'd have reimbursement from those accounts.
But they should have that in their budget. It's a problem. It's gonna be why they would have to.
I should say, I didn't know.
Well, they'll, they'll have to do an amendment because we won't know anything for actuals until we really get into it at least a little ways.
But before we get the budget out, the line has to be put in because we can't, can we do budget amendments and add lines?
No, we can add lines.
Well, you can add lines anytime. You don't have to do a budget amendment to add a line. It's the amount you have to have.
Their total budget still have to be able to pay for it.
Yeah, you have to be within.
So they gotta have a little excess in their budget or they're still doing.
Ten thousand dollars would be fourteen thousand, five hundred minutes.
But then you'd have your equipment charges that come out of that too. So, or purchasing.
Yeah.
Purchase.
I, I mean, you start stacking up ten.
But that's what I mean. I mean, if you think fourteen thousand minutes really isn't that much for as much time as Nick spends per person in there.
Do you know how long they average or anything down there?
No, I don't. I could ask the girl.
But I mean, if you figure.
And they're not on the phone. They would, they're not, you know, when they're issuing and things like that, it, it's not.
It's not constant.
Yeah, it's not constant.
Now, the computers, do they switch to Spanish?
They do. But they're testing computers. Yeah, they, they can take that in their, their like, their language.
That's what I thought. Yeah, that goes to any language they want.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're testing. They just click a button or hit the language that they wanna use and they can test.
Yeah, you know, you, I have no idea how much the sheriff would use it. It'd just be.
Just before people call in, you know?
Yeah.
They have an emergency or.
How about nine one one? Do they use, do they have something?
I believe, I would think they'd have to have something, but I don't know what they use particularly if it's this service or if it's something else. I couldn't tell you. Like you're talking dispatch?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, Don might know.
Don might know.
Open the door and ask Don.
It's Don here.
Is it Don?
Do, does dispatch use anything for translating?
Um, we have a translation service available.
Is it Language Line or is it something else?
Yeah, it is. It's like he can, I think it is.
It is.
But we also have, usually the officers just use their cell phones and use them to translate.
Yep, yep. Well, we're talking about Language Line right now. Chris put it on our agenda, so.
Do you know how much it, it costs a year?
I, I was thinking that, but we could, we'd probably have to check with City Hall or Roger, Roger Fisher might have that number for the dispatch sending the budget to him. Roger Fisher might have that number for the dispatch sending the budget to him. Cuz he had the total, I don't know if he got all the line items, but for our percentage, he got the total.
We paid thirty.
Thirty eight percent, how much, how much they spend on it for their.
Oh, or anything, they probably never gets used minutes per minute fee, so. Yes, maybe if it's two hundred dollars a year, I do, I mean. But they don't use for office or use Google Translate.
Okay, they don't use it very often, they use Google Translate a lot more probably, but. Don't budget a ton for it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Probably the officers use Google Translate.
Chris. Hello.
Hi, so this is not gonna be a very good comparison cuz you're not really comparing apples to apples. Cuz they use, they will use it, they use it a lot more than what I perceive the county uses, but their highest bill was twelve thousand a month, their lowest is six thousand.
How much?
You gotta remember, their patient influx is a lot more than what we probably see.
Yeah.
Oh shit, that's a little.
Ouch.
So I mean, you have third floor using an X-ray, you have ER, you have the clinic.
Yeah.
Home health, I mean, so there's a lot more daily.
Wait till next budget year?
I mean, I think maybe we should work into it a little bit more, I don't, I don't know.
I'm, I'm just saying, we're kinda, yeah.
You're, you're, you know, they use a hundred and some hundred and forty thousand a year.
Yeah, you also.
Like I said, it was cheaper, but you know, the influx of, of people coming in and needing the use of language line. Has increased over the years.
Well, even Nick, you know, if you say they use it every day.
Yeah, we use it every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, but their conversations would probably be fifteen minutes as opposed to the hospital, you know, when you go in for a doctor visit, it could be a half hour at least. So, I mean.
Yeah.
We would still be looking at less than what the hospital. Our usage by minutes would probably be less.
Oh. But even if you go, even if you go with their lowest number.
Yeah.
Per month, that's still seventy two thousand or, yeah, seven two thousand a year, so.
I don't think we would hit that.
We wouldn't go that much, but, but still.
I could see us possibly getting to thirty thousand in a year.
Yeah, but we gotta budget this.
You don't think so?
I, I, I would, I would be a lot more comfortable if we just figured out. Little more information on what exactly how much we're gonna use it, so we can better estimate how much it's gonna cost the county. And maybe, maybe have to plan for next budget year, that's fine.
But even if you're gonna plan for this budget year in July, we're gonna have to know that number today.
Carter's saying skip a whole year.
I'm saying wait till next budget discussion.
That's a long time.
That is a long time.
I mean, it is. But yeah, that's.
My suggestion is to put eighty thousand in supervisor's budget.
That's a lot of money to do at this point in the budget.
If you don't spend it, it stays.
That, I mean.
That's gonna really change your budget.
I know, but.
You could, I could maybe see doing something like five or ten, um.
You ain't gonna, you, you'll run out of money so quick.
I mean, just put a limit on it and then when we get close to that limit, we just, we just don't use it. And then we could kinda see how much you think for the night here, I guess.
Can't do that cuz you got the system, you got monthly fees for it.
Yeah.
And if every, if people start using it and you take it away.
Yeah, that's tough too. They gotta sell the equipment, you got a monthly fee for the equipment, so you can't stop it.
This is service that you, once you implement, you're not gonna take it away, are you, Nick?
I think that'd be very difficult.
Are there, one of the questions Tammy had asked after we got off the phone with you was, um. Is this, is this pri- like the only pricing they have or is there pricing for government or?
That is the government pricing, cuz they do this full contract for government agencies. So we're, so we're part of the Omni Partners. Um, they go through all of the procurement process for government agencies, Incasuit is one of those that we're in. That's one of the partners on Omni, that's how the coun- that's how the hospital got it as well.
Well. Could we get my legit using it?
So this is the government rate.
Department for the first year and see how it works and then expand it from there.
I, I would probably struggle with that. Can you, can you have one of their company reps come in and talk to us in the board meeting?
Um, I could have her call, I'll see if she can come, but I'll, I'll call Kelly and see if she can.
Call, call would be a start.
Well, give us information on how another county uses it.
Are there any other counties around us that use it currently?
Um, as far as county entities or hospitals?
County.
Um, that I don't know, but I can find that out as well.
Okay.
That would be the.
That, that'd be good information to have.
Okay.
See if somebody could have a.
Yep, thank you, Joe, that's not, but I'll see when Kelly's available.
Okay, sounds good, yep.
Okay, sounds good.
If you do, if you do talk to her and she's available yet this morning, um, just. Uh, I guess, let me know or whatever and we can have her call in quick cuz it's. It's on our agenda for today and we could come back to it, but otherwise, we'll just leave it. Leave it a- as is for now, so.
Okay, no, that's fine, I can do that.
Okay, thanks, bye.
Bye.
I wonder what Emmett County uses because there's a pretty significant Hispanic population in Emmett County.
Well, what about?
Or Wright County.
Bro, Wright County.
Wright County's gotta have a lot of that, so. So I imagine between those two counties, there's gotta be.
You know, the auditor?
Yeah, Betty is Wright County new auditor and Heidi is the new Emmett County auditor.
Be, be good idea to just call them up and talk to them.
Okay, I could send them emails too.
See what they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're, we're just shooting in the dark here.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So, I was kinda surprised at the cost.
I just move on from that today?
Yeah.
Well, they use it up on the third floor.
Language line?
I don't think they have an interpreter that's on the phone, on a phone line.
Oh, I don't know.
I think they actually have a court interpreter or like a, a person interpreter for the state.
They have to have a live person, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that's language line.
Cuz there's specific people that are hired for that.
And they have to have a real person.
Yeah.
Need court to do that. So do you wanna add it to this budget or are we gonna come back to that?
Let's leave it for now.
Okay.
Um, if we can get their rep to call in later, we can come back to the agenda item and just talk with them, but for now, let's.
Okay.
Let's leave it, um, any other questions come to mind for you, Nick?
No, no, not at this point, just to find out, get a little more information on it, I guess.
You'd rather have it done in the next budget season or instead of waiting a year and a half?
That would be handy.
Yeah.
That would be handy, it's a whole another year.
Oh, cheater?
Sure.
You're the best, thank you. I broke both of my cheaters. And so Willie's super growing them for me.
Important job.
Yes.
All right, well, thanks for coming over for that, Nick.
Yeah, just kinda saw that, I was excited about it.
Yep. Well, next is to set the date and time for public hearing for those property tax levy for fiscal year twenty five.
So this morning I passed out the proposed tax levy, yeah, now, um. That's not completely final, I think those numbers will be right cuz we're not really changing the levies at all, but that's, um, with the levies that you guys sent. Of course, I'm not done with all the budget stuff yet, so I won't send it out, but that is what it's looking at at this point. Um, so I'm asking you to set the hearing for March twenty sixth at one o'clock PM.
Do we have a motion to set the date and time as one PM on March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four?
Some move.
Maybe a motion is our second?
Second.
Second, right, yeah, any further discussion? Any questions, comments on this page here, Tammy?
Did you set a time, I didn't?
One PM.
One o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be a separate hearing and also, um, usually we have comments on the bottom if there's gonna be an increase, but because we have a decrease. We don't have to have any, there's no- nothing to say why we have an increase cuz we don't, so, um, that's why it says NA at the bottom.
What's that?
I have care connections at one thirty that day, that's okay, okay.
It won't take very long.
No, no, that'll be fine.
You could even call, but actually you want to.
Yeah.
Well, you're on, you're, you're not gonna have any questions, are you now?
Nope.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Plat? Jerks?
Yes.
Whackster?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the resolution for longevity. Or for adopt, adoption and implementation of wage scale changes. Um, which is including the change for longevity. Any discussion, otherwise I'd entertain a motion, then we can go to discussion.
This would be separate from the union contract?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct, this does not apply to the union.
And also on this resolution, it does add the scale number four for the victim witness coordinator, so.
Okay.
Uh, resolution number would be. Zero two twenty twenty four zero one. Would I have motion to approve? Roger, you're shaking your head, is that?
No, I was shaking my head at the resolution.
That's the number, okay.
I don't really support it cuz I think we oughta address courthouse hours at some point instead of just all the time changing everything. We've never really talked about that again either.
But this doesn't have anything to do with courthouse hours.
But we're, we're, we're giving benefits again without talking about courthouse hours, that's my point. I don't think it's a bad resolution, but I'm tired of talking about it.
Is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
As it stands.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I don't think it's the right time to do it because if you have to go back four thousand dollar increase for, 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 uh. For family, for insurance alone, that's.
There, there was some other options for health insurance that we got numbers for and that could still be. Could still be, those options could be looked at and explored, the number we put in the budget is max.
I don't think it's the right time to, to do it.
Okay, Roger, anything besides what you just said? Don or Willie, yeah, anything you wanna say?
I have care for insurance.
Nick?
I don't know, I think.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Plat?
No.
Jerks?
No.
Whackster?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes, resolution passes. Just one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a reminder.
Um, we got some transfers in our packet, did everyone see those? Anything you wanted to highlight on them, Tammy?
No, just basic, normal transfers.
Okay, uh, we'll also acknowledge the transfers, including the lost transfer. Next, we'll talk about insurance here, um. We did get.
Do you wanna call Doug up for that?
Yeah, you wanna call him? Yeah, go for it. Should grab some water here.
Are you talking about what email?
Hey, good morning, Doug, we're up to insurance in the boardroom. Yep.
So there's a couple things here, um, the one email had. Possibility of four tier plans versus two tier plans. And then the other one had several attachments. And I forgot my binder at home.
Are we right back?
We. Yeah. I'll have a couple things. Yeah, that's what we're just starting on. Longevity?
Yes.
I mean. We already, uh, yeah, it'd be two sheets from now, um, yeah. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
I even came in on a holiday.
Yeah, I mean, I worked.
All day Saturday.
Oh, yesterday.
Yeah.
I forgot it was holiday.
Yeah.
Don't worry, I didn't take President's Day off either.
Yeah, I didn't either.
It did take some time off to get ready for vacation.
Well, that's good, where are you going?
Florida.
Nice.
This morning on the way to work, the song, um, Two Pina Pilates was on, so I took a picture of the screen and sent it to the girls at work. I'm like, three days.
Are we all ready or? Is this Roger's coming back?
Oh, yeah, perfect, I, I'm gonna take a cycle here at school. Well, are we ready to start here? I think everyone's back and stuff, um. We got those other alternative rates here. Looks like, um, expected claims would have a, um, three hundred thousand dollar difference. Going to the, cause this one was C O B S, that's the, is that the high deductible one? Do you know Doug?
Then, I, I guess I'm not understanding which, what you're referring to.
Well, the, one on the left has all the deduct, or the first one has all the deductibles listed with deductible thousand, twenty-five hundred, and then twenty-five hundred and five thousand. The other one says C O B S for everything. From the last email she said.
See the off, off balance sheet? O B S?
Yeah.
Are you, I mean, you're talking about what was the O B S at the top left-hand corner, seventy-three nine twenty-one dash four-nine and
And fifty.
seven-three-nine-two-one-dash-five-zero?
Yep, yep, that's what I have here. And I tried to call her to ask a couple of questions, but I didn't get a call back, and that was last week, I think. Um. Have you visited with her since she sent these at all?
No, I guess I, if the board would like to have questions asked, I certainly can email them and copy them to you, so you can get, uh, be in, in replies. I, I have not.
Well. Could be wrong here, but I think the C O B S one is the high, actual high deductible plan. Cause that's where it's got things that are not.
Well, if you look at the the benefit summary, yeah, the, um, there's a talk about a fifty dollar deductible with, uh, out-of-pocket maximum of three thousand two hundred, family, uh, benefit period deductible one hundred with a family out-of-pocket maximum of six thousand four hundred is mentioned in that benefit sum, or off balance sheet, excuse me. I call it a benefit summary. And it might be benefit summary, they're throwing so many acronyms around, it was difficult for me to follow.
Yeah, those other sheets do have a benefit summary listed.
I, I don't know.
The file name says O B S, but the actual thing, the top says benefit summary, so yeah. Does anyone else have any questions in mind right away?
Where are we going?
Well, it's open for discussion, I guess, and I don't, I left some of my other papers at home, um. But I, I could see an advantage of offering a second plan that would have a high deductible option and, and give employees that option with a H M A.
So you're gonna fund the H M A for the person then?
Yeah, I mean, I would to, to a whatever level to kinda keep them comparable.
Who's gonna administer the H M A? Is that gonna be totally up to the individual who manages the H M A, or is there restrictions on how it's used? I've never had one, I don't know. Donna, do you know?
You're gonna have to help even with H M A, because I'm familiar a little bit with H S A, so I don't know what's an H, what's an H M A.
Homicide asphalt to me.
Well, like, H M A is homicide asphalt.
For, I mean, health savings account, I, I have no information. I don't know how it works or anything.
I mean, Michelle kinda explained some of it when she was here. I don't have all the technical details of it, but I think that'd be something we could work with her to sort out. But I like the idea of giving employees options and flexibility and reducing the costs to the county at the same time.
But if you do a health savings account and you fund it, how are you saving the county any money, I guess is my question.
Well, I mean, if you look at these two side by side.
Correct.
Your, your expected claims and stuff would have a three hundred thousand dollar difference roughly. So if you contributed three hundred thousand dollars or less towards those contributions, you would be in the same or better position.
Contingent on if the employee would take an alternative package.
True. Yep.
Yeah, I guess why would a employee take the health savings account package instead of insurance? Only if he planned on never using it, cause that's what you're trying to tell me?
The people that would probably be enticed to do it would be those who personally felt that they had a low risk of maximizing their coverage.
Yeah.
So if it works that way, wouldn't it increase the cost on the people that would stay in the other plan? Because they would use it more? So would you save anything in the end, is my?
Over time.
Yeah. Get where I'm going?
Yep.
I'm not, I'm just. Wouldn't you just raise the rates on the people that stayed in the full coverage plan?
What happens with that health savings account if somebody leaves or is terminated?
It goes with them.
So that's, I don't think that's quite right either. If we're gonna, if we're funding it, and then giving somebody the extra, you know, I, I don't see that as being, being right.
But is an H M A the same thing as an H S A?
I think they're similar, but I think it's depending on who does the contribution. I think the H M A is the employer contributing. I think the H S A is employees opting a portion of their paycheck into that that's pre-taxed. They're both pre-taxed, but I think the difference is who contributes from, from what she said.
Difference is one carries over, the other one does not.
Yes, H S As don't carry over.
Yeah, year to year, so they would basically use it or lose it kinda thing. The H M A carries over.
Flex, flex accounts don't carry over.
Flex accounts.
H, H S As, do they carry over a limited amount?
H S As, in my understanding, do, cause that's what, I mean, Luke was kinda referencing.
Yeah.
He had an H S A and he just cashed that out. That's, that goes into a.
But doesn't H M A have to spread that in here?
I have not ever, H M A is not something I can even speak to. I can't even speak to H S A.
Yeah, you, you can't carry over an H M A.
I think from what she was saying, I think people use the terms interchangeably, but I think the H M A is employer contribution. I think H S A is employee contribution, but I'm.
Are you sure you're not talking about H R A?
Well, she used both terms, didn't she?
Well, retirement, R is retirement.
No.
S is savings.
Right.
And I believe that's what she was talking about.
But savings comes out of, um, I thought came out of the personal, what was supplied by the employer, am I?
I, I don't know. I think that employers have the choice to to fund whatever they want. It's a tool for employees.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see how you can approve any of this, cause nobody, nobody has a clue what to talk about, so. Nobody, just, how could we even begin to try to prove something here?
Well, it's not, it's not about approving something today, Jack, it's the discussion of it, but.
Discussing stuff that nobody has a clue on.
Um, we could have Michelle back, but you weren't here when she was here the first time and explained it, so. We could, we could definitely see about having her come back again, but.
I think it would probably be better to have her come back and explain these to us a little bit more. And to clear up the definitions of H M A, H S A.
She could come with a, she could come with a handout for every acronym, that'd be alright.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have one of those prepared or not, but.
No.
We are, I mean, the only thing I would say, we are getting down to secondary roads, it's open, or safety meeting, and typically we do open enrollment information to them, that's April nineteenth, and then usually the first week or so of May. And I think I recall last year, Walmart needed a few weeks' lead to get us that information.
Can we put it on the agenda for next week and see if Michelle will be available for next week, so we can?
I'd say checking Michelle.
Contact her.
Well, yeah.
So what, what are you gonna talk about? Deductibles too? Or changing stop loss, or?
Well, that was all part of the conversation. We never really made a decision on any of it.
That's what I mean, what, what are you gonna do with the stop loss and what are you gonna do with deductibles?
Or keep it affordable, I think we're gonna have to raise them.
Hope.
Whether that's going to seventy-five thousand on stop loss, not that. Obviously, it's more affordable to go seventy-five thousand versus keeping it at thirty-five.
Seventy-five made more of a material impact than a lower change did, because we did have more numbers that would still hit it. Their administrative fees for the stop loss were jacked up substantially because of the number of people that hit it.
Well, I don't think we're gonna be able to really get much further into this without having some explanations on, on it, so I think we need to have Michelle back.
I could try calling her now, but other than, I mean, that's probably not the greatest for a conversation. Could see if she's available for next week, though.
Yeah, let's do that. Do we have a number we're shooting for here?
Well, you got a million and a half savings if you went to seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss, five thousand, ten thousand deductible, you save a million and a half dollars in the county.
Yeah.
But also your rate is deductible quite high, how are you gonna handle that?
Yep.
We talked about going to forty or fifty once, didn't we, Doug?
Stop loss, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about a lot of different stop losses, so. We've had quotes given to us for, um, stop loss of thirty-five to seventy-five thousand.
Right.
With, uh, different, different deductibles, same deductibles, different out-of-pocket maximums, same, uh, di- same out-of-pocket maximums.
The, the stop loss is a management decision we make here that doesn't directly affect the employees, the deductible and stuff. That would be directly affecting employees and what they're paying for healthcare coverage. Stop loss would be a management of the fund.
So do you know when you raise the deductible, so do you change the co-pay too? Does that change?
Not necessarily. It does not have to.
It does not have to?
No.
Okay.
My understanding, you could, you can order, I mean, you can have a low deductible with a high, or did you say co-pay?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, that deductible and co-pay are separate. I was thinking out-of-pocket maximums.
I was thinking about what you pay for drugs on co-pay.
Right, well, prescription is a whole different, I mean, there's a deductible for medical, there's a deductible for prescriptions, and I, I I thought that we were gonna go to the prudent, which was a benefit for both the county and the employee, as far as prescription drugs.
Yep.
So I don't know if there is what, what is involved in that plan, to be honest, if there's any way of changing, uh, deductibles and
You have to leave very.
out-of-pocket maximum if you go to that plan.
I guess my question is, if we go to that plan, can't change the deductible, it's actually a benefit for both of you.
I, the way I understood it, that was pretty much set that prudent was just gonna.
Prudent or X.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we've got our numbers in the budget and stuff, I guess, let's see if we can coordinate to have Michelle here next week and see what we can do that way.
I'm taking vacation next week, um, and I guess that's fine. Would you like me to talk to Michelle?
Um, I sent her a text here at when she didn't answer my call, but if, if you wanna follow up with an email.
No, you're starting to go ahead. I would appreciate, I guess I appreciate when emails are included to everybody, texts are included to everybody, so people can see the same question, the same answer.
I just asked her if she could be at our meeting next week.
No, that's fine. And I am on vacation, so. I do have concerns about multiple plans and equity. Right now, we have, in essence, two separate plans. Family, single. Everything is provided to all healthcare contributions are taken by the county. If you move to two plans, how is that going to be? Equitable, because you're, you're really going to see where. Usage may or may not change. You're going to see where one person's. The contribution for one person's plan may be different than a, a contribution for another plan and how you. Uh, treat everybody equal that way.
Do you feel they're equitable now?
No.
I don't either.
So, but we are self-insured. You go to a high deductible plan, I'm not so sure that it's not going to affect. Our fund balance more than what you think because. You're still going to pay out of the pocket for the first, for everybody, but about five, but about ten people. We're co-insured on the top end, so how are we going to save so much money? We're going to be getting less in premiums. To pay all the bills. I'm just curious how it's going to work. Because you're going to collect less premium if you go to a high deductible, less money is going to be available for us to pay medical.
I mean, I, I'd like to see a concept. Of what, what you're looking at, I guess. I, I don't understand the concept.
Well, you see where I'm coming from? There's going to be less money in the fund because you're going to be collecting less insurance per individual. If they go to a high deductible, so that's less money to pay claims, correct?
Yeah.
So, how are we going to make it work? I, I don't understand how we as a self-insurance company can make a high deductible work. Does that make sense? Because we've got less money.
You would have less money, but you would have less expense on the bottom end.
We're still going to have the same people getting sick, probably.
Michelle could probably explain it better. Um.
I, somebody's got to explain that to me because I don't get how we're going to save any money. Because the claims aren't going to go away and our co-insurance last year paid for ten people. Tomorrow?
Uh, co-insure, well, the stop loss?
Yeah, after the stop loss. It paid for.
Well, there were more than that, yes, but over thirty-five thousand.
Right.
Yeah.
But we need the money to pay for all those claims under thirty-five thousand. That's where I'm at.
Well, we'll see what we can do for next week.
In your scenario, if you get, you save more money by raising, raising the deductible.
That would save more money.
Save more money.
Yeah.
Raise the deductible, that employees pay more, more out of pocket.
Well, or the other one, that is you make the employee, you pay part of it. That's another way to save money. And then you don't have to mess with the plans much. If I could raise a stop loss. You can raise a stop loss, that'll save some money. Then you can pay it out. For the next.
Well, it's not, I asked, it seemed like that, that, um. Stop loss did, again, make a big difference as we thought of it, to raise it. I mean, we looked at. I know the last couple years, I looked at raising that thirty-five to fifty, whatever, but never.
It's been, it's been on the.
Didn't make enough difference, though.
Anything you want to say for the secondary?
We made more of a, we raised the stop loss. Would have been cheaper.
Do you include what we're going to send us, which?
I mean, if we raised our, if we raised our stop loss to.
Or you said that you know.
Forty-five thousand. And had a deductible. Of single, one thousand.
I don't remember.
Family, two thousand. Out-of-pocket, single fifteen hundred and three thousand.
Yeah, I know. She just said it on Saturday, so.
Estimated claims would be three and a half million, three million, five hundred fourteen thousand. Using our current, which is thirty-five. With a deductible of five hundred, single, one thousand, family. And out-of-pocket maximums of one thousand, two thousand is, uh. Three million, nine hundred twenty-one thousand, so that's four hundred thousand dollars saved by doing both. Increasing stop loss and increasing some deductibles. I mean, you hope that. Oh, the county contribution, yeah, I agree, is about twenty percent. That was decided, yeah, but part of that is because of last year. We, the increase in the contribution did not cover the anticipated. I mean, even now, the county contribution is right around three million dollars. And if you want to build a balance. It's difficult to do that if your expenditures are three million rather than.
Twenty percent would be a hard one to pay.
Uh, I don't have a year, but. It's, uh.
See ya.
Nine hundred, or excuse me, family, two thousand, two hundred sixty-five per.
Per month.
Per month.
So, they use two thousand, that's more than that.
Yeah.
Closer to five thousand dollars.
Would be kind of hard on our fund balance if you're.
What do you mean?
What, what downside is here?
For the self-insurance fund, like a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, it's over quarter million.
For, for last year or are you talking this year?
This year, we're about two hundred thousand, not quite two hundred fifty.
What's the projected fund balance? Is what we need to do, is it still a hundred thousand?
Two, two.
Well, I've estimated. The fund balance to be. Between two million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred, two million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, so around two and a half million dollars. What are, what do you think of what we have right now?
You have the, those numbers, you know, if you ever should put that up there, and then those numbers, you always, you always play around with things, like increasing the deductible. Stop loss to, as you were saying. What would, what would, what would, what would the fund balance be?
Well.
If it went up like, say, it went up about ten percent of the county contribution. Increase the deductible.
I would have to, I guess, get a plan, uh, what, what plan you wanted to look at. As far as increasing that deductible, so getting some extra costs.
To the, whatever we had on the airway.
We, we already budgeted twenty percent increase using the current plan structure, so if we change anything, we could save money on top of that. But what's in our budget now is a twenty percent increase.
We need to keep the fund balance adequate.
Add, add twenty percent increase, add what was six hundred thousand to the cost of insurance.
Totally?
Yeah.
I don't.
Would have been estimated current, two million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. And, uh, this current contribution, three million, sixty thousand, two hundred forty.
Oh, yeah, six hundred.
Do you even have a scenario there where we raise that deductible to a thousand, twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, I did not plug those numbers in at all.
You have to see what that, how that would affect that fund balance.
I. I used.
Current, what, the same numbers we have now, the same deductible we have now?
No. Well, I, I, I've used a couple of different situations that, um. I mean. If you want to just speak in some round numbers here. Let's just say our estimated ending balance is two and a half million dollars. Or projecting next year of three million dollars to, uh. For contributions.
Yeah.
Rather than.
Yeah.
And. So, depending on what you choose for a plan, um, our current. Would have been three million, nine hundred twenty-one thousand, using just what our current. Insurance is, so we would have been taking another nine hundred thousand dollars from. That balance, leaving us with about one point four. Which is very, especially when you start looking at catastrophic.
Right.
Um.
Then, do you have a scenario there with the increased deductibles?
I had one where the estimated cost was three and a half million, so then that, that, uh. Would go down to two million, but at least next year, if there was a, even if there was two catastrophic events in the same year, I think it would. Or not in the same year, if there were two back-to-back catastrophic events. I believe that our fund would survive. There was also discussion of trying to get the fund to three million dollars. But that's, that's.
Always felt that it needed to be probably around two and a half to three.
Right, well, we always felt, felt more comfortable at three, but.
One. We need to see, we always felt going below two and a half is a little sketchy.
One of the things Michelle had said was some people aim for their fund balance to have. That hundred and twenty-five percent of our maximum liability. We are above that. But our percentage above that has gone down over the years.
No, I would disagree with that statement because.
There.
If your maximum liability, you're going to get for, what we have right now, that'd be four mil, four and a half million dollars.
I don't, I don't have my paper.
Right now. Yeah. And if we collect.
If you have that chart, yeah.
Here, if we raise those deductibles to the levels we have here. You're saying that would maybe put us at about two point five a year?
And we have a good year where people are healthy, not losing. There's that chance.
I don't see where we've got much of a choice but to raise deductibles. We already got the twenty percent plugged in. I don't see if we've got much of a choice why not to not raise the deductible.
I can't speak for other employees. I've talked with some. We've got four in here. I think that. The employees that I've visited with, uh. Raising a deductible to doubling the deductible.
Right.
I don't think employees are against that.
I don't, I don't see how we can.
And then increasing. Increasing stop loss and increasing deductible, both employer, employee, take risks.
Thank you.
There's going to be employees that do not have, like, that will not have deductible. I.
Well, it might be, I think that's, that's the, I think that's the worst one you could take.
Go to doubling deductible.
And, uh.
Two thousand and four thousand?
Yeah, and then, uh.
Oh, no.
Doubling it would be a thousand and two thousand.
The one I'm going to add is one thousand, twenty-five hundred, and then twenty-five hundred and five thousand for family.
Current deductible is five hundred dollars, single, one thousand dollar family. That's current deductible. And out-of-pocket maximum, current is single is one thousand, family is two thousand.
Well, I don't see where we're, I just, I don't see how we, maybe have a choice but to at least double those deductibles and, uh. Grow it, growing it with the twenty percent more and into the insurance. And, uh, hopefully, I guess, and then I see it will turn out, hopefully, have a two and a half million that will carry over next year.
It's dangerous, I'm. Still got four and a half million dollars.
You may go with the button, and this shirt keeps it around that. I left the button off on this time.
That's a fifty thousand dollar stop loss. Or maybe that does for fifteen hundred and twenty-five.
You're going to, you're going to punish single policies more than families?
There's fifteen hundred and three thousand in.
Yeah.
That's, we're still, annual cost is still four million, three hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars. We're. There's no magic bullet here.
No. Yeah, I guess, if you want to go ahead, maybe fifteen hundred, three thousand, or a thousand, two thousand, or. You said two point five thousand for stop loss?
Uh, that's, you know, that's an option.
Yeah.
And that is one that we do have a. And that is one that we do have a, uh, we have a renewal rate sheet.
Is that, that a proposal for that?
So we can't figure that out.
Right, I think, I think, I guess it's down to what, what people want to be deductible, people that want it to be a thousand, two thousand.
Well, you guys have mentioned employee contributions, is that on the table for you or not?
Well, I think everything's on the table.
Well, it's, it, it's gonna, it's gonna come to a point where employees will have to start paying some people for insurance. I don't see how we can, we can't not go down that, that avenue at some point in time. It's, we're, we're above.
Well, we can't talk about it forever and not do anything either.
But, I mean, it's, like I said, it's technically raising the deductible is putting it to the employee to pay some of it.
It is.
It is.
So it, I mean, that's, that's their contribution to it is paying that higher deductible.
No.
So versus, you know.
I think doing both in one year is too much for the employees to absorb, I mean, that's just a lot to ask.
Well, and then you gotta talk compensation differences because part of our employment package is that, you know, a hundred percent funded.
I mean, we're, we're, with this four thousand dollars that's definitely in, we're approaching fifty percent of some people's pay for insurance. In the same way, close to fifty percent of what some people are, they're telling us paying for their health insurance.
Some over that.
Yeah.
I mean, board, if you look at, if you look at what we get as board members, um, family package would be more than fifty percent of our wages.
It's enough. See, I mean, that's just, that's, that's boring and being a little bit ridiculous. That'd be harsh, but you can't look at it any other way. And maybe come to, to a point where you, this, we put this twenty percent on there, in the future, anything above that, you have, you have to, you have employees pay the difference, yeah, that's. It goes up another, another ten percent next year, let the employees pick up anything above that.
Well, how do you go back on the times when you only put four percent in and you were recommended to put more in? That falls back in your lap, and now we have to pay because you didn't want to?
Those were really, we had good years. That's not something, that's not apples to apples.
Sure did.
No, it's not.
Keeping the fund balance where you need it. You thought it was gonna be okay and then you had more events and you didn't plan it.
We've always, we've always kept the fund balance where it needs to be. This is the first, this is one of the first years where it's, it's starting to come in.
Now, according to Fager's Doug put out in meetings, right here in this boardroom.
We should've raised the contribution last year and kept the fund balance higher, we didn't do it. That was, then you have to make up for it.
So you're saying, just.
I'm not saying nothing, I'm just saying there's.
You're saying is we can go ahead and just put twenty percent in next year, we need to put twenty percent next year.
If you need to keep it sustainable.
And we're paying fifty thousand dollars per employee for insurance, but that's, just let it go?
No, I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying there's been decisions you've made in the past that are affecting today's decision.
I don't agree with you at all.
He just told you in plain English.
We've done our due diligence to keep that fund balance where it needs to be, yes, there were some years when we didn't have to put much in.
And you should've, and you wouldn't be in this position.
I wouldn't say that, one, twenty-two, we gave ten percent, wouldn't have been enough to do what is still gonna, taking the fund balance down.
We did twenty percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, seven percent. Twenty-two. The minuses in there at times with the fund balance, I know. It's called self-insurance. We might have a good year this year, we don't know.
Well, I, I, I guess my opinion is we've already got the twenty percent plugged in there, and it raises, it raises the deductible to either one, one thousand, two thousand, or fifteen hundred, two thousand, and, uh, probably raise that to, uh, uh, less than forty-five thousand.
Looking at, looking at the numbers, it, for, going to forty-five doesn't make a big enough impact to make it worthwhile changing. If you're gonna make a change, you gotta go higher to impact.
The higher you go, the more you're gonna take out of the fund balance.
The higher you go, the less liability Wellmark expects to take, so then your stop loss fee is gonna come down, that's.
That's all based on how healthy the people are.
Yeah, but.
It's based on using it either way.
If, if you expect us to be healthy and wanna bet on ourselves, then you have to go high enough to get to a level where they're only covering the top few individuals. We have so many that have hit the thirty-five thousand, they're expecting it on a consistent basis rather than.
All these, I've gone through this, the last nineteen years, raising that stop loss never had, was never a very good avenue to, to go down, not raising it drastically. I mean, we've looked at those.
We didn't.
Year in, year out, and it, it was never a, a, one of the more prudent moves to raise that stop loss too high.
Well, and I think that's because, you know, last year, we never looked at going to seventy-five thousand, we looked at the forty-five thousand.
We looked at it every year, we looked at it up every year, raising it to.
No, we haven't.
I, I have, I've been here a lot longer than you have, I've.
Last five years, we've never gotten an example for seventy-five.
With all those stop losses increases.
How many people would've hit the forty-five on the current?
Stop loss?
Yes.
Got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve people.
Twelve out of how many hit it?
What's that?
How many total hit it?
Twelve people last year over forty-five.
Right, but how many hit the thirty-five total?
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Uh, the difference, the difference between forty-five, the people who hit forty-five and the people who would've hit thirty-five would be five individuals.
Sixteen.
So you don't move the needle far enough.
No, if you only have five people, you're taken off the list, you're not increasing Wellmark's liability.
If you go, if you go up to seventy-five, you get down to three major ones that are over seventy-five and three that are barely over seventy-five.
Six people.
So you get to six, but three of them are just across that line. So Wellmark would have very little liability on those three, they would have major liability on the other three. So that's where you go from fifteen.
Correct.
Sixteen to three, that they would really factor in. That's where you change the stop loss costs.
Where they're saying, we're not gonna spend as much money.
Yeah.
Where you're preying.
And it cuts it in half, if I remember right, almost, from over a thousand to five twenty-four for stop loss.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's where you save the money.
Yeah, thousand eighty-one for thirty-five thousand, and then it's five twenty-four, thirty-nine, seventy-five thousand.
That's great, minor stop.
That's why, that's why, like, the maintenance of over the year, we always ask, if you raise that stop loss, you can never take it back down.
That's true, and that's what I said last year as well.
You wanna be careful on how quick you, you raise it, take, take baby steps, because you can never back it up.
Their standard book of business for groups our size is at seventy-five thousand.
Problem is, is you take baby steps and you may make a little headway here or there, you know, year to year, but if you're wanting to get that fund balance back into where it's stable, then you need to make a larger change now, because we don't know what's gonna happen next year or the year after that. But, so we need to have that fund balance stable.
But if you pay more out of your plan every year because you raised the stop loss, it's harder to keep it up, isn't it?
That's incorporated in their expected claims, is paying those extra bills.
Right, they're using math that we can't use, they're, they're probably smarter than we are.
I don't, I don't know that I'd quite say it that way, but they're, they're.
They're using educated guesses, but we're not.
Their, their underwriters are using statistical data, and there's a value to that, but you also have to, I mean, we can, we can put our interpretation on that. Like, last year, they expected our fund balance ended at two point eight million, if I remember right, and we ended at three point two five. So just because they put it on a piece of paper doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it's a statistical estimation of what they're predicting.
They don't know anything about our fund balance.
I know they don't know anything about our fund balance, but based on.
They don't estimate what our.
Based on the cost they provided, that's what your number showed, that we would've ended with a two point eight million dollar fund balance.
Do we give any kind of premium reduction if we have a hundred percent participation in wellness type program? I, I don't know how that impacts that, would that be something, is that, I just don't, I haven't heard that at all, and I just, I'm not sure how that works.
Biggest.
Or.
There's a cost to that as well.
To have a program?
What is that, Donna, if you remember?
I don't know, I'm just.
I don't remember, there's different, and that's a menu of services too. Really, you can do, you can, instead of us doing our biometrics, they can do it. But again, I don't know, I mean, I think that's a good practice to encourage healthy, but I don't know that that's going to.
It's like.
It's not really figured into.
A hundred percent, it's probably not happening, because if you're talking wellness, you're talking about vaccine, vaccinations, and, and there's, you're never gonna get a hundred percent of people.
I just know there's, there's a lot, because there's a lot of people who, for various reasons, don't believe in vaccines. Which, maybe that's not part of.
I don't get a hundred percent.
Yeah.
But I admit, I think, raising the decision on what to raise a deductible to, maybe fifteen hundred to three thousand, and if that is raised, stop loss to four, five, six.
I could agree with the deductible, but stop loss, to me, has gotta go either stay where it's at or go higher, because it doesn't financially make sense.
You can always look at it again next year, but like I said, you can't take it back down. Once you, wherever you set it, Wellmark will not allow you to reduce it.
You, you don't get a big enough impact from going to that level, though, and that's what they look at.
Correct, but you also are gonna pick up all the costs between thirty-five thousand and we were saying seventy thousand or ninety-five. Seventy-five, now the fund balance is gonna pay for all those costs out of there.
True, but your fixed costs go down.
Sure, but gives it each, we don't know.
You, and, and no one knows till you have actuals, that's, that's the reality.
You're behind.
That's why you need to be careful how, how, how much you raise that stop loss.
But at the same time, being careful doesn't necessarily mean the, the best impact financially, um, stepping up slowly, sure, you might see a slower, slower change, but you're not making enough impact to get it, to make it be financially positive.
All I'm saying is you can save a half a million dollars on the stop loss, but then you're gonna spend it on a good percentage of that on costs.
But that's encompassed in their total expected claims.
Correct, but it has to be ours too.
Which still show, but it still showed, what, million, million and a half savings?
But how much are we gonna spend? We don't know.
Well, again, that crystal ball.
To move the needle, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go fifteen hundred to three thousand, four thousand, forty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollars stop loss. That's, that's what I'd rather. Drive forward, I mean, considering stop, I'll have all day on a boat, I'm just.
Oh, we don't have a tie-breaking vote if we get to that point, so it's.
Well, you gonna get more information or not?
There's been some emails, which you guys have been included on, um, and.
So probably haven't got anything on what we've talked about right now, so.
Um, their, their representative, Michelle, is out till Monday, so we won't know for sure till she gets back, if she'd be able to, um, but they just asked for date and time of the meeting, so I can share some information that way and see if we can get someone here, but yeah, I, I think we'll need to evaluate it next week. Do you wanna turn the conference, I'll call Renee, see if she can call in. Hey, I just sent you a picture with our conference line number, would you be able to call into that? Just ready for you right now. Perfect, thank you, bye.
To join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise, press [bleep]. Please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are one participants on the call, including you, you are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star, pound.
She, I just called her, she's gonna call in, so we'll hear when she joins. And Tammy forwarded the email she got from her with the draft.
That's right.
Over the weekend.
Saturday, and I wasn't, well, I was here yesterday, but not working on that, so I didn't forward it until this morning.
No worries.
What email, what did you send me, bro?
I just sent it a little bit ago.
Just before, just before ten.
From me, just a little bit ago.
Here, I got it on my screen. Read it, can you read that? Can you make it bigger?
Maybe I got it.
Yeah, there it is. Did that, did you send that to anybody, chance? I did not see.
Oh, sorry.
Like, did you send it, I guess?
Um, let me check, I, I don't.
It doesn't look like.
I did.
No, it's just to the board.
Hello, Renee, can you hear us?
Hello.
Good morning.
I forwarded to you.
Good morning. This worked pretty well.
Yeah, kinda worked out timing-wise here.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So Tammy is sharing, is sending the email you had sent her, she's sharing that with the board and just sent it to Doug. We, we have, um, Jack, Roger, Josh are here, Carter just had to leave here about a half hour ago.
We need to stop everybody.
And Tammy and, and Doug, no, we're fine.
It's open meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's fine.
Okay, she sent an email, it wasn't.
The email, yeah, the email says this will be a bargaining strategy meeting, so it isn't, isn't open.
It, it does not have to be an open meeting, but we've discussed all this stuff in previous open meetings, so, I'm, I guess, Renee, do you feel that it needs to be outside of our public meeting, or have any issues?
Well, it is, you know, it, it is really a proposal that we are, it, it might've been discussed, but this, what we're really discussing is a proposal to the union, so that's exempt from the open meetings requirement, so, because it, it would be a bargaining strategy meeting.
Yeah, but. But.
So.
Is there, I mean, we've, we've talked about. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the, I think that's the difference is that we're talking about if and whether and how and in what form. We are going to send this proposal to the union. And that's definitely bargaining strategy.
I guess, I, I'm not concerned about talking about it, the way we are, we've already talked about most of the pieces of this, so. Anyone else have concerns?
Were you opening up the bargaining agreement?
That's, yeah, this would be a change to it.
But it's gotta be a closed session, if you open up the bargaining agreement, you're talking about it.
It's not closed session, but it's exempt from open meetings requirements, but just because they're required doesn't mean it can't be discussed here.
Yeah, it's just really not the way that it's normally done though, I mean. So you can either adjourn or you can, you know, and then we talk about this, you know, under chapter twenty, it's clearly exempt. And there's reasons for that. You know, I think especially when you're talking with the, you know, your bargaining representative.
No, I say this stuff.
Oh, it's up to the board, but my suggestion would be is that, you know, we follow chapter twenty and that this is exempt and it's not open.
Okay, is that the desire of the board?
Yeah, if you're not gonna do it out of chapter twenty, I'm leaving. Because we're negotiating in open session, I don't believe in that.
Jack?
It's always done, bargaining's always been done in closed session before. Sounds like, sounds like Renee's suggestion would do that.
Okay, turn the recordings off.